Good morning. This is Luke Revan, manager here at East Brandywine Township. I'm addressing you in my capacity as the online moderator for this work session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials and our residents, the board is conducting this meeting by webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the township's YouTube channel. Public notice of this meeting was posted on the township's website consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for the meeting was also posted on the website at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter. The agenda is also visible on your screen. Members of the public can hear us, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. As with in-person meetings, I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by the chairman before speaking, and that all comments be directed to the chairman. To be recognized, you must first ask me, in my capacity as the moderator of this webinar, to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature, which is located on the left side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and their address before posing a question. I'll now turn the meeting over to Chairman Leonard.
Excuse me, one second. Real quick, Luke, Lisa has no volume. Can you, is there something you can do on your end?
Our township secretary, Lisa?
Correct.
She has been promoted to presenter. It could probably be something I could troubleshoot.
One second.
But I don't know that. I can't excuse myself in the meeting to go fix that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was something you could do on your end, that's all.
Matt just walked over, mate. Is Lisa in her office?
Yes.
Matt just walked over. Maybe he's trying to help her, help get it going.
Okay, well, let's keep us impressed with that. Good morning. Welcome to East Brandywine Board of Supervisors, work session May 6. Like, is there any public comment on agenda items?
I see three members of the public in the room. If any member of the public who would like to address the board, please use the chat feature to get my attention.
Okay.
Give it just a moment.
Do we have any, any comments?
Let's give it just a second to see if anybody is interested in addressing the board on agenda items. Mr. Chairman, no one has approached me about unmuting their microphone.
Okay, great. Let's move on to the minutes of the previous meetings. April 1st, 2021 and April 15th, 2021, meeting minutes.
If there's no changes, I'll make a motion to accept the April 1 and April 15 Board of Supervisor minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on. We see the manager's report and the planning commission meeting minutes from March 3rd and April 7th.
Wait, do we want to, I only, I only put a motion in on the Board of Supervisors. Do anybody, I got a need to make a motion on accepting the planning commission minutes of March 3rd and April 7th as well?
Mr. Sherbach, I would point out, there's a slight discrepancy between the agenda that's projected on your screen and the agenda that is pre-printed and posted online.
Oh, okay.
The distinction is, is that the planning commission minutes appear under Roman numeral 3, minutes of pretty meetings on the printed agenda, and under 4, reports on the electronic agenda. And the reason for the distinction is, is that you're not adopting the minutes of the planning commission. That is, the planning commissions work, but you are accepting that they have submitted their minutes for your review.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'm looking at the pre-printed agenda.
Now, that's entirely on me for throwing you a curveball.
That's fine. You know, I'll make a motion to accept the township manager's report as the planning commission meeting minutes of March 3rd and April 7th.
I'll second a motion.
All fair?
Aye.
Old Business Vision Partnership Program grant contract update. Luke?
Yeah, good morning. I have in your packet this morning the Vision Partnership Program grant for execution by the Board of Supervisors. At the conclusion of the meeting, I would ask that you execute this document. The Vision Partnership Program is a Chester County grant program that helps municipalities engage in planning activities. We have a 2009 comprehensive plan and a 2011 official map that needs updating. The Vision Partnership Program will pay approximately 57% of the anticipated $70,000 necessary to complete the project. At a previous meeting, the board selected our consultant, which is Tom Comiteta Associates. And the grant contract, the grant period is May 1st of this year through April 30th of 2023. So it's a two-year period to complete the project.
Okay. Any questions, George?
No.
None.
All right. So at this time, it would be appropriate to make a motion to authorize staff to execute the Vision Partnership Program grant contract materials in your packet.
Okay, I will make that motion for, to authorize township staff to execute the Vision Partnership Program grant contract.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke.
Your one man. One question. Luke, is there a master copy that'll be available assigned? So all signatures will be on that rather than the ones we have in our packet, right?
Right. The county gave us two options for executing. One is to execute an original paper copy five times and then forward it to our consultant to sign, and then forward it on to the county, or we do so electronically. I have opted for the electronic option. So in your materials for execution at the conclusion of the meeting, there is a single page of the contract representing the execution, which will be scanned and amended, sent to the consultant to sign.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on then to Andy Heimert's memo for the Hope Well neighborhood traffic statistics. I know we've been working with this neighborhood and research for a few years now. The child also have their outstanding issue of the cut through traffic competing in the concerns. Andy's here to give us an update on that. Good morning, Andy.
Good morning.
How you doing?
I'm fine, thank you. Yourself?
Good. So any, where are we at with, as far as, I know you had done a study and there was a little bit of controversy as far as some information before, but that was had been cleared up. Has there been any, you know, where are we at in general, if we can update our community?
I'm sorry, you're breaking up. I didn't get all that.
I just wanted to know if you could provide the board an update on where we're at with everything.
Well, I, all I can say to that and is what referred to the memorandum. That's where we're at at this point in time. There's no good option to address the situation at the moment. I think everything falls into place when some extraneous improvements get done to the road system, which is typical of traffic calming measures. There's usually something else happening elsewhere that is forcing traffic to use the residential streets. And that's pretty much what's, one of the causes of what's happening now. People are short cutting through the neighborhood because there are other limitations to the road system. It's tough to get out of Guthries, North Guthriesville Road onto 322, and there's congestion at the signal down Hope Well-Bonsoil Road. So people use the shortest and quickest path to avoid those congestion locations. And that's what they're doing. They're going through the neighborhoods.
You don't, you know, Andy, it's George Sherbach. You don't believe that the speed bumps will do anything?
I don't think it'll, I don't think it'll address short cutting traffic. Speed bumps are a speed control device, not, not to the extent that they add a few seconds to a motorist's path. That's still better, a better choice than trying to get out onto 322 at North Guthriesville Road. So you might see some reduction in travel speeds, but the volume of traffic, I don't think will be affected to any great degree. And frankly, the travel speeds aren't all that, all that high anyway. So how much bang for your buck are you going to get from speed humps? You'll get some. The other issue is the geometry of both Brookhaven and Ferndale is such that speed humps are best located when they're on a straight section of road. These roads are pretty curvilinear. There are a couple of spots that can be looked at. You also want to put the speed humps away from houses because when vehicles travel over them, they generate noise. So in the spring and fall, when people have their windows open, if the speed hump is too close to the houses, people are going to hear them. There is one instance, I think in East Whiteland Township, where they put in a bunch of speed humps on one road, and the neighbors complained about the noise and they had to take them out. So there's, there's never 100% positive. There's always going to be some negative, and it's just a question of cost benefit ratios, et cetera. Is this a good move or not?
What about Andrew, Kyle Scribner? What about a sign at the entrance saying, no, no cut through traffic and/or residence only? And if, if the police detail was situated there during, and again, I'm speaking for the police. Unfortunately, I don't know their schedule. I'm sure they have zero time, but if it was something where it was occasionally on those, on those high traffic times that they were getting ticketed, unless it was a resident, would that be an option?
Well, the only thing is, it's a public, Brookhaven's a public, public street, and it's being maintained with public tax dollars. So I don't think that kind of signage is illegal from a regulatory point of view. I know of places where something to that effect has been done. Some people pay attention to it. Not everybody does. Police, police hands are tied in what they can do about it. But, you know, it might keep some people from doing it.
The other thought was, they've done this in many, many developments where they'll have a sign that says no left turn or no right turn between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM. What's your thought on that?
Well, that was one of the things I mentioned in my memo. The thing you have to remember is North Guthriesville Road is a state highway. So you have to get a permit from PennDOT to do so. And to the effect, to the extent that you limit traffic during those time periods, where is that traffic going to go? It's going to be forced either through the shopping center or down North Guthriesville Road to 322. And now you're forcing traffic to make a very difficult left turn out on the 322 during the two busiest times of the day. And there's a question of whether the safety of doing something like that comes into play.
So, so the roadway that was proposed to go between the two shopping centers, between 322 and Guthriesville Road, would that alleviate that problem?
We're hoping so. It gives the option of forcing traffic that way. The other thing is, as part of that, the road through the shopping center, a pork chop island is supposed to be constructed at North Guthriesville and 322. So it would be physically prohibitive to be able to make a left turn in or out of North Guthriesville Road. So you're, the motorists will see that after one time and know they can't do it anymore. So they'll be forced to look at other paths. And that, the connector road might give them some, a viable option in order to avoid having to go through Brookhaven and Ferndale.
All right. I have just one last question. I know that the, and I'm not sure if it was the HOA that you had sent the letter to or to residents, but there was a concern that at, at one meeting, they had talked about the average per day was 400 to 500 cars and five miles over the speed limit. And that was taken after COVID. Then I believe there was a number that was between 830 cars in average per day, March 4th to March 11th, which was pre-COVID. Is there, and that was according to the, to the residents, that was a stated, you know, number that was shared with them. So clearly, it sounds like pre-COVID is almost double what it was post-COVID. And what, is that, is that the fact?
I forget what the numbers were pre-COVID. We looked at, we looked at the current counts. We did, we did Brookhaven at one time and Ferndale at another time. And it was just prior to when COVID hit and all the closures had hit. So the count on Brookhaven was pre-COVID that we just took, and we, when we counted 500 cars a day. So either the numbers went down for some other reason, or people have changed their patterns, who knows? But that is a pre-COVID number. The number on Ferndale was a post-COVID. When we put the traffic counters down, the Ferndale count malfunctioned. And then COVID happened a couple of weeks later, and we weren't, we missed the window to get the counter back out there. So that's why that count happened post-COVID. But the numbers aren't significantly different as a result.
All right. Because the residents, I believe, are saying that it was almost doubled pre and post. But then the other issue is if there's a safety issue. I know a police report was filed for speeding. Somebody almost got hit by a car. And that was during COVID. I guess that's the biggest concern. Obviously, we as the board have distinct, you know, ability to make some changes, whether it be, something I was thinking is, you know, I know our roadmaster, and it sounds like you as well, aren't 100% in favor of the speed bumps. But if it was something that the, that the homeowners association was, was interested in doing. The problem is, is the township, if we start putting in speed bumps for every township, or every, every, yeah, if we, if every development, we could end up, you know, going bankrupt. But if we, if we limited it to a responsibility of the association, it might help the township and it might help the association and the residents thereof.
Well, certainly they can be considered. Like I said, though, there's limited locations where they can be installed. There are, there are certain design issues that have to be considered, such as the configuration of the road. And you really need to put, for speed bumps to be effective, there needs to be a series of them. Because studies have shown that if you only put one in, people are likely to floor it after they've passed on, passed over the hump, and you wind up having higher speeds as a result at, once the vehicles have passed over the speed hump. So you need at least two, preferably three. I look at the road and to get a good enough spacing between speed humps, I think the best chance is to keep them away from houses because of the noise issues. You can put at most, I think, two on Brookhaven down at the low point there where it crosses the stream, and two on Ferndale between the two sections of houses that you have on that. I don't think there's room for more than two on each road, and that's going to be pushing it.
Yeah, and I know, last thing, I was just going to say, I know another development in our township, their association, their, their roads are private. They, they have done removable speed bumps, and they put them up for the summer, and they take them down for the winter. And they're on their second season of doing so. So I would imagine that there, there was some benefit of, I can't speak for them, but I would imagine there was some benefit, otherwise I wouldn't have put them back up. So my next question for that is, as an expense, you know, is that an option? Or are those not, are those not to meet local roadway codes?
No, in fact, if you, if the direction that the township wants to take is to put speed humps, I would recommend the rubberized temporary installation as a start. Because, like I said, there is the noise factor. It might come to pass that the residents change their mind about it or whatever. And for the snow removal option as well. So this gives a period of time where you can test out whether there is in fact any benefit to having the speed, the temporary speed humps. And the nice thing about them, I've, I've worked on a project in Upper Gwinnett Township, Montgomery County, where we did just that. For the first year or two, temporary speed humps were installed at a couple of locations. And then it was found that they, they did serve a benefit. They took out the temporaries and they put in permanent asphalt speed humps. And then they had the temporary ones to use in another location when, when another neighborhood complained about short, short cutting traffic or speeding traffic through their neighborhoods. So they can be reused in other locations as a test case if the occasion arises.
Yeah, I kind of like that idea, only just because it's not 100% commitment. And, you know, obviously, if it works, it works. And like you said, you move on to bigger and better.
Right.
We have any idea of the cost?
Off the top of my head, no, not at this point. But I can provide some information on a vendor to, that the township can look into for obtaining them.
Andy, would you be able to, if, would we, I guess we would require a discussion with PennDOT as well as far as our, you know, intent to, for these temporary speed bumps? Assuming, or is that, or you don't have to?
No, it's township.
Brookhaven and Ferndale are both township roads. PennDOT's not an issue.
Okay, I didn't know before the, as far as the, you know, our tax, as far as the liquid fuel money being used for that. Okay.
No, you're not, you're not restricting traffic access in any way. So my understanding is that does not affect liquid fuels money.
I would have, I think I would be in agreement with Kyle about, you know, getting some pricing on the temporary speed bumps so our road department has a, you know, a set. And, you know, what do you think, George?
Yeah, I do too. I mean, I, I like the, the speed bump idea. The one neighborhood that Kyle was referencing, I've seen, you know, once again, you're not talking through traffic. In this, in this situation, it's more local resident traffic. But I see local residents avoiding a speed bump by going around different roads, those that live by it, say. So I think it's worth trying. As the, as the HOA, I mean, first of all, one, does this memo get shared with the Hope Well HOA? Is that something we share with them?
It's a, it's a public document, so they, they can.
And have they come together with the thought, or they're just waiting to hear options before they come back to us as a, as an HOA unit to say, this is what we'd like?
I believe that they're waiting for us to come back to them with a different, you know, with the township is proposing. They're just hopeful that we're proposing something soon. And, you know, they will get some, late summer, early, early fall in Mapleview. Because, you know, unfortunately, people will be coming through there to the light, you know, as well. So I'm sure they're.
And if we do these speed bumps, because Kyle's saying, you know, you're right, we don't want to have to, have to put them in all neighborhoods. Is this something that would be a cost sharing feature?
We can use our, since the North Guthriesville Road is part of our capital improvement plan, I'm assuming Andy would know more than me, that I think that be able to utilize our chat, capital improvement money for our chat, chat rotation impact fee funds.
No, I don't think the, the impact fee funds are applicable to this case.
Even, even if.
I'm sorry?
Even if it's going to improve, I guess it wouldn't improve people from the North Guthriesville level service, I guess. Because we're not, we're not trying to keep people from, you know, even going out there. You're right.
No, but the, these roads were not considered in the, in the study that supported the traffic impact fee. So they're not, it's, it's not a project that's listed. Funds can't be used in this case.
When I said cost sharing, I meant between the HOA and the township. I didn't know if that's something the HOA would share in that cost.
Just another idea, Luke, I don't know if Matt, Matt has ears on right now, but if, if, I guess my question is, do you know off the top of your head, how many developments in East Brandywine? I can't imagine it's a ton, but how many developments have the cut through capability that are, that are township road?
I'm not sure I'm following the question, so.
Meaning, meaning, I know that we probably have four to six developments that have the, that have public access to cut through for, for, you know, to get around a traffic light or something of that nature. Besides Hope Well, off the top of your head, is there anyone else that you can think of that, that has had complaints in the past?
I can't think of any other HOA that has complained of cut through traffic. There are certainly HOAs that have concerns about the speed and volume of, well, not even volume, just basically the behavior of the motoring public, not the, the cut through traffic.
Yeah, I was more or less thinking if we were to limit this request only to cut through versus speeding, it would, it would maybe limit the amount of, you know, we have. I don't know if you just heard that question, Matt, but I was just curious, how many developments have cut through capability such as Hope Well, where you can bypass through a development to get to a secondary option?
Yes, I saw the chief come on also. One of the major ones right now is the Hillendale Development, traffic cutting out through Township Road, down to Creek Road. Those, those residents have been concerned about that, especially the residents that live on Township Road. Because previously Township Road was just essentially a dead end. It went back to the Mount ID trailer park. And now it's a, it has an interconnected road, which goes through the Hillendale Development and is connected to Creek Road. So that is another route that, that the residents are concerned with cut through traffic.
Right. Seven Springs, portions of Seven Springs and portions of Nichols Mill will be offered for dedication to the township, but they are currently private roads.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my, my thought process is to start with this one and see, in a temporary manner, with the temporary speed bumps and see how it goes. And if it was something like the other development, they are removed at the end of October, and they're not put back into, into use until the beginning of May.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that as well.
Can I, can I make one comment?
Sure.
What, you, Mr. Scribner, you brought up a really good point. What the township might want to do is adopt the policy where we go out and we purchase, if I hear Andy correct, we might need four sets of speed bumps. Have them owned by the township, and when we have a situation like this, enter into an agreement of time in a development. So for example, Hope Well, we put them down for four months, we test them out, we see what the residents think. And if the HOA likes the idea, have the HOA purchase the speed humps for their development, and we remove ours. And then we can use them in another development as a test again, and do it that way so that the HOA is maintaining all of the costs and replacement. Because I mean, the rubber ones will wear out after a while, so they may have to be replaced. But this way, it'll put the cost on the HOAs if they really want, you know, this type of, you know, calmly. And it kind of relieves the township of a lot of costs and a lot of requests down the road.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yep, good idea, chief.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much, Andy, for coming to us to be, providing an update in your, in your memo.
No problem. I'll be done. Oh, just one, just one final thing to remember too, that we focused on the speed hump itself. Keep in mind, there's signs, signage and pavement markings that have to be installed as part of each speed hump to give motors the warning that they're coming upon them. So it's not as simple idea of just putting the speed humps down in the road. There are other things that have to be done in conjunction with the actual physical speed hump.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.
Now, moving on, let's go to New Business, the Estates of Downforge, stop signs, speed limit and no parking.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this morning, to continue with our discussion of, I'm going to say, traffic issues. In order for the stop signs, speed limit signs and no parking to be enforceable within East Brandywine Township, the board would need to amend the associated ordinances. I've reviewed ordinance 80-1, which is an ordinance provided for the establishment of speed limits and stop intersections and the erection of appropriate traffic control signs on certain roads within East Brandywine Township. I also reviewed ordinance 96-3, which establishes no parking on streets within the township. The reason for the view, review is to amend the ordinance to add the new roads in the township. We've received, first, I'd like to talk about the Hillendale Development. We've received emails from residents in reference to Seven Springs and the section of Nichols Mill Road, which are both scheduled at some point, more than likely by the end of the year, for acceptance by the Board of Supervisors. For both roads, people have been for and against parking on those roads. And I was looking for a consensus from the, the board, whether it's today or at some point in the future for future discussion for parking on those particular roads. Part of the settlement agreement from November 4th, 2004, between the Township Board of Supervisors and South Down Homes, that settlement agreement states that there should be no parking on the, I'm going to call it the connector roads that go from Township Road down to 282. And in my report, I enclosed that section of the settlement agreement. So let's see, the second issue is the posted speed limit on both of these roads and the remaining roads within the development. It's my opinion that these roads fall under definition Title 75 PA 102, as defined, the territory contiguous to and including a highway not comprising a business district and the property on the highway for 300 feet or more is the main approved with residents or residents and buildings in use for business. So what that mainly means is that for 300 feet along the road, there should be houses on one side of the roadway in order to classify under the Act 102, which is, the township can post that, those roadways at 25 mile an hour without having to do a speed study. And then the, excuse me, the third issue is within the Hillendale Development is the excessive use of unwarranted speed signs, stop signs, I'm sorry, stop signs. At Seven Springs and Dawson Place orders way intersection, there's currently an always stop. And then at Seven Springs and Nichols Mill Road, there's an always stop there. In my opinion, both these intersections, they have adequate site distance and they do not warrant always stops. It's been demonstrated that unwarranted stop signs do not control speeds and they can create other safety issues. People, if people tend to roll through an unwarranted stop sign at like seven or eight miles an hour. And then motors can be speeding between stop signs just to make up the perceived time that they've lost. So that's, that's the main issues within that development. Like I said, I would like to see if we can get some of these resolved, not necessarily today, but at some point to, excuse me, so we can make amendments to those ordinances.
Hey, Matt, I got a question on this last issue because I went up there to check out the intersection yesterday. How did it get established as four stop signs on both those intersections? Is that through planning commission or how, how did that get established?
I did review the plans, the, that were submitted to the township. And the plan does show always stops at those intersections. I do not know how we got to that point, but there, those stop signs aren't, they're not warranted stop signs. If, if you look at warrants for stop signs, it's, it's based off of three different things. First thing is average daily traffic. Second is site distance issues and the third would be accidents at intersections.
I mean, you go down, I, I see what you mean when, you know, four stop signs because Nichols, Nichols, there isn't much on the one side of the street. But when you come into that neighborhood, you're coming down a hill to that first intersection. You'd be coming down a hill right through that, all the way through to the, I guess, to the end of the road. So I guess my only concern would be coming down the hill into the neighborhood, could be coming at a decent speed. And that first sign, stop sign at least stops, you know, stops your, stops your speed again, that's all. That's what I have on the first one.
Like I mentioned though, you're not supposed to use stop signs to control speed. And if somebody does stop at that particular intersection, then they're going to speed up to get down to the next intersection because, you know, they've, they perceive that they've lost time. Whereas if, if you just have a normal flow of traffic down through there, then people will travel at a decent speed, even if it's downhill or whatever, but they will travel at decent speed.
Matt, what is the speed limit that they are looking at when it's finally done?
I believe it's, I believe everything's probably posted at 25. I, I did not see any speed limits, speed limit signs on the plans themselves. I was mainly looking at the stop signs. But I do recommend 25 mile an hour throughout the development. I mean, that's a.
Hey, chief, real quick, I, I kind of remember there was something in the vehicle code and I'm drawing a blank, but if it's not posted, doesn't it automatically take 55 miles an hour as the accountable speed?
Yes, but, but they're not dedicating it. So whatever their speed is right now is what they're doing. Yeah, I just, I know that we have, we have received complaints. I mean, one of the things that I have spoken to the HOA president about is their concern about speed. So they, they had already talked to me about speed humps throughout Seven Springs and Nichols Mill. So I don't know what's going to happen once the roads are dedicated, but they do have a concern about keeping that speed down through that whole section there. So, you know, whether the stop signs are going to affect that or not, I don't know. But I, I do expect at some point they would be back to us with some kind of suggestion about speed bumps or other traffic calming measures.
Is there, I mean, I don't know if we have governmental immunity, but is there any liability on our part backing off from four stop signs to two and some horrendous accident occurs?
No, like I said, there, you know, there's signs really aren't warranted. So I don't see any issue as far as the, any liability for the township. I am recommending at the Nichols Mill, Seven Springs intersection that, excuse me, if Nichols Mills is set up as the stop and Seven Springs as the through, an additional supplementary sign on those two stop signs, which says cross traffic does not stop. And that's a, that's permissible by the MUTCD.
Matt, you say we cannot have a four-way stop at that intersection?
No, you can, but, but in my opinion, it's not warranted. It's not a warranted stop sign. Because there's adequate site distance, the average daily traffic doesn't warrant it and the accident statistics.
But the residents are concerned about speeding, right, chief? From what you heard?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we've gotten complaints about speeding and the parking on the street. My only concern about the taking that away, Matt, is, and this is, this is not in this township, my past experience has been when you add something to the stop signs and other ones we're adding, through traffic does not stop, it makes the intersection a little confusing for the residents and it would take a while for them to, I guess, get used to that. And to avoid any issues, I, I'd like to leave it four-way, but again, we could, I mean, maybe we could have a discussion with the HOA about that and see what they think. I'm just, I'm concerned that, you know, somebody coming up at that intersection off of Nichols Mill or not, or coming down to Seven Springs and not realizing that that's what the situation is there, especially with all the cuts in traffic going on right now. But that's, I mean, again, it's, it's, it's a discussion we can continue to have.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it as a traffic engineering part of it, not the, I mean, part of traffic engineering is to make sure that things are safe and that's why there's supplementary signs I would recommend on Nichols Mill. Because then that, that advises you that traffic coming down Seven Springs or even going up Seven Springs does not have to stop. It becomes through traffic.
And the emergency vehicles have looked at this neighborhood in the event that there would be on-street parking, that they could still get by and on-street park cars?
I'm not aware of if emergency services has looked at it or not.
Right, so earlier Matt referenced that the settlement agreement that was, that resulted in this land development, referenced that there would not be parking on the spine road, which is referenced in the light pink on the, the vigil aid. So if reviews were done historically to this plan, it would have been the assumption that there would not be parking there.
Is there an HOA and a president for this development?
Yes, they have a five-member HOA. Three seats are still controlled by the developer, two by individuals living in the community.
Okay. I think it's worth, as chief said, to chat with them about this situation, stop sign interceptions.
The HOA president is Ben Wolf.
I know the HOA president is not in favor, let me make sure I say this correctly. He is in favor of no parking on the spine road. There is a resident who lives on Nichols Mill Road who pretty much adamantly states that they need to park on Nichols Mill Road. So that's the, that's the two conversations that, email conversations that I've seen so far.
Okay.
So if, if there's no further discussion on that, I'd also like to discuss the Hideaway Farms development, which has a similar stop sign situation, which is at the intersection of Randolph and Patriot. And I see, so yeah, it's right there. So it's, it's a similar situation. The developer has installed an always stop there, four-way stop, whatever you want to call it. And there's, there's no warrants for that, for that always stop either. So my recommendation would be for Randolph to continue to Patriot as, as a through road. And then where Patriot crosses and goes to West Brandywine Township, for that to be the stop intersection. So it's similar to the, to the ones in the Hillendale Development.
It's also similar in its current legal status. Again, the, the pink line represents roads that will be offered for dedication but have not. So this is a conversation about a, a future in which we own those roads.
Similarly, but, so can you go to Randolph and?
Rebecca?
Yeah, Rebecca.
This is, now we get into a green road where we do have, we have.
Right. So the developer had placed an always stop there too. And so prior to accepting Rebecca, they, the developer was asked to remove the stop signs on Rebecca and then naturally leave the one on Randolph. And there was a little bit of opposition at the beginning, but I think the residents have figured out that, and that they were concerned about speed through there also. But now, since the stop sign's been removed, I, I think the residents have come to the conclusion that, that that stop sign wasn't warranted and that it wasn't really controlling speed through that development.
Yeah, and Rebecca is such a long road. I think if people are going to speed, they're going to speed regardless.
Generally, it's not too bad through Rebecca, but once they get down to Emma, they're, they're moving pretty good down through Emma.
Thank you.
You're going to have, you're going to have speeding issues in every, pretty much in every development. I know that the, the chief runs into it all the time and, and we get complaints about speeding, even in some of the older developments, such as Helway in the Tunbridge Development. It's, it's a long straightaway and people's speed seem to get up through there, even though it's a, a development street, it's posted at 25, it's legally posted at 25. People drive at a speed they feel comfortable driving.
All right. Is there any other discussion or items?
I didn't know if, if, if the board wanted to act on the Hideaway Farms, the always stop, removing the two stop signs in there prior to dedication? Or if you want some additional information on that?
I'm okay with, you personally, I'm okay with your recommendation, removing that before dedication. George, Kyle, if any.
No, I'm very familiar with that road. I have no problems with that, Matt.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, prior to, prior to completing the amendment to the ordinance, then I would like to wait until there's a, you know, a consensus for the, the Hideaway Development. If there's additional discussion on that, that way we can do pretty much everything at once.
I do have one question. Do stop signs have to be a certain distance from the corner?
There are certain, yeah, there are certain regulations as to where the stop sign has to be placed.
Does it look, it looked like at Nichols, the one stop sign on Seven Springs looked too far in, not close enough to the corner, to the point where, you know, you'd almost, you can see it, but I mean, you're looking more at a corner. Does that need to be put up closer to a corner if you take a look at it? Just take a look at it.
Okay.
It just seemed out of place, that's all, that one stop sign.
Yeah, prior to road dedication, the township, myself and our township engineer will go out and we'll look at every sign, every, you know, the placement of the signs, the location of speed limit signs, we'll go through everything.
Okay, okay.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Now moving on. Uh, permission to purchase, please, on the state contract, Chief?
Yeah, so for this year, we're, we're scheduled to replace two of the Mark Patrol units. And those would be, uh, vehicles that come off of Coastcar State contracts. Uh, the two cars we're replacing are already over a hundred thousand miles. Um, the reason I'm, I'm bringing it up in the meeting is that there was some discussion last year about us possibly trying a hybrid vehicle. Um, I, I just wanted to bring information to the board that I have had discussions with the up-veter that puts our equipment into the cars. And I also attended a chief's roundtable last month in which the topic of vehicles came up. And there were some comments made about the hybrids, that they've been having problems with the battery systems in them and whatnot. So I just wanted to let the board know that I am on top of the hybrid situation gathering more information. But for the purposes of this year, um, I'd like to stick with the gas engines, uh, the regular gas engines. The hybrids are $3,500 more per vehicle. Um, so, you know, we're, we're going to be stating $7,000 right there by just sticking with our typical V6s. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that the board was still okay with me moving forward with the purchase of two cars. That money was allocated to our capital reserve, so it is there. And, um, if you had any other questions, I've already been collecting Coastcar's contracts and, um, as of right now, it appears that, um, New Holland is, you know, giving us the cheaper prices.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm okay. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next would be the Council Independent Contract Service Agreement, Chief?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna table this one. Um, new information came into me in the last two days that I have not had a chance to look over. Um, and once I have the ability to, then I'll come back to you on that topic.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Chief. Moving on, there's no subdivision, no zoning applications, no ordinance resolution preparation. We have public comment on non-agenda items?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've, uh, one individual has asked, uh, asked to make comment on agenda items. Bruce Rawlings, Chairman of the Planning Commission, remind any other members, uh, who might be listening to use the chat feature to get my attention. Uh, so I might unmute your, your audio connection. Bruce, can you hear me?
Might he need to hit star six, Luke?
Uh, he's joining by, um, his.
Matt, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Now, we'll start all over. Um, last night at our planning commission meeting, we had a discussion on, uh, traffic. So it must be traffic day for, uh, the township. Um, and, uh, we found out that Wallace Township has on the books right now 1,500, uh, homes coming, uh, which will be coming, some of them will be coming through our township. Cow Township has, uh, 1,300, not Cow, uh, West Brandywine, 1,300 new units coming through. We have a thousand units probably in the next five to 10 years. And, uh, Cow, West Cow has quite a similar amount of numbers. Uh, as a township, uh, planning commission, we were concerned more on the regional basis of, uh, what that's going to do to our, uh, 322 corridor and would like to know if the supervisors would like us in the planning commission or in the task force to start trying to address these items. You've talked about a lot of cut-through, uh, roads today and those particular cut-throughs will probably be, uh, volume will be increasing, uh, dramatically over the next five years. And I think we need to start talking about that on a more of a regional basis. Uh, so I just wanted to see, um, what the supervisors would like us as a planning commission or a task force to do, if anything, at this point in over the next six months to a year. Cause I think it needs to be taken care of. And then one last, uh, comment. You were talking about all this information, stop signs and speed and stuff like that. And we had Andy on the line. It would probably be good to let him look at your ideas of stop signs and what's legal, what's not, too, just to have him do a quick, quick review before you start, uh, changing or stop, taking stop signs out. So any, any thoughts or comments?
Bruce, I had one. You, you just mentioned, uh, West Brandywine and Cow, I believe. Uh, were you, uh, I, I actually, funny enough, got a phone call from residents of, um, uh, of Applecross yesterday pertaining to surveyors going through the, uh, what was to originally be the 55-plus community in West Brandywine for Applecross.
Yep.
Um, what do you, what are you hearing on that?
Uh, that's one of the ones that's going to be, uh, pushing through.
Yeah, that's one of the ones you were talking about, though?
Yes, correct. But I was more surprised about the Wallace Township, uh, and how they're already have it, uh, on the books and ready to go move forward. So that's, that's not as, uh, probably only a third of that would be going through our township, but everything it seems to be going down to 322. So we need to be looking at our traffic and our services, uh, to accommodate this. I don't, not sure what's happening up in Honeybrook and how many homes are going to be going up that way either, but that, I think it's all very important to know all that and then start planning. I, we wanted to use 322 as the corridor, but you can't make that a four-way, a four-lane highway unless you really, uh, change the whole personality of Guthrie'sville.
And, and oddly enough, I thought I just read an article about a roundabout going in on 82 and Reeseville Road, maybe it was further in, uh, or maybe it was Manor Road. I can't remember. What, what in the world is PennDOT thinking for that intersection versus 322? Because 322, like you just said, is a huge, uh, thoroughfare. And they're putting a roundabout someplace that in my opinion is not near the amount of traffic at 322.
Uh, I would tend to agree. And yes, I heard that's going to be going in. Uh, uh, maybe it was a, something that was less costly, uh, than trying to do something on 322 and it makes it look like they're doing something. Uh, but I know going down, uh, 82 down to, uh, the 30 bypass is an important road also. So maybe they're trying to keep the flow going down there or, so I don't know the reason for it. We can look into that.
If I may, uh, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Group, um, did a corridor study of 322. I think it was from Honeybrook to the 30 bypass. They did that about seven or eight years ago, I believe. Maybe, uh, the planning commission would like to look at that again and see those recommendations from the, uh, the DVR PC to see if there's any possible implementation that can be, uh, done for that, for the corridor. But I think the only way to do it is to, to work with the, the surrounding municipalities also. That's the only way you're going to get anything done with 322.
Uh, I, yep. I don't know. A solution to this. I'm kind of hoping, uh, we get some input. I think the chief is on, maybe the chief has some comments on this or?
The one comment I would just say, Bruce, is that I believe, I, I believe I'll be able to pull Cow information off of our LPR system that's installed at the intersection down here. So I'd be able to get you, uh, the number of vehicles. I know definitely per month, I might be able to get daily counts, but I can get you all directed because we have it set up on all four. Um, and, you know, directions of the roadway. Uh, the other thing, if I remember correctly, going way back when, there was discussion about trying to make 322 four lanes, that that was not going to be a possibility, if I remember correctly. And that's why there was a lot of more conversation on the, uh, the bypass road that was proposed.
The loop road, right. Now we had conversations, maybe making it two, uh, two lanes going west and one lane going east and another lane road. There's a.
Right.
There were a lot of conversation, but, uh, as a township, we eliminated, uh, the loop roads on the upper, uh, upper Reeseville. And now, uh, we basically have, uh, in the process, we don't know where we're going to be going with the, uh, East Reeseville extension, if that's ever going to go through or not. So, uh, we have to kind of count on, uh, what can we do on 322? And I just see that there's going to be a lot more cut-throughs going through neighborhoods, which that's what the whole discussion was tonight.
I totally, totally agree with you and I would support, I would support if the board, uh, feels the same way, that you guys would somehow get involved and maybe, you know, try to collect some information regarding what's going on with our surrounding municipalities.
Chief, have we been over the one-year mark for the LPR system?
Uh, we're coming up on it.
So that might be our perfect window to do a, to do a monthly count from start to finish in one calendar year. And then we use that number to go back to PennDOT and say, hey, seven years ago, you were at 2 million, we're at 3 million now.
Yeah. Another thing, while, while I got you on the board of line, we did receive our new speed trailer sign. So we're in the process of trying to retrofit it to the trailer. And that, again, does have the capability of doing counts. So, uh, once we get all that set up, it's going to take us a while to get it set up, but once we do have it, we'll be able to put it out at different locations and get some speeds and counts of vehicles with it.
Okay, so, uh, our task force is pretty well, uh, busy at this point to work on, on this particular thing in the, in the short run, because we have the comp plan we're working on. And, uh, planning commission probably could, uh, have continual, uh, talks about this. Is there any other venue that we should, uh, try to work through? I mean, we work, work with the chief, we work with Matt. Uh, is there a committee we need to make? Uh, it's not, this is not an Act 203. This is an, uh, basically a, I would say more of a regional planning of how, how we're going to get traffic through or through this township. So I don't, we don't have to answer any of this. I just wanted to bring it up since it was fresh in my mind from last night. So, George, you have any thoughts?
Do we have, did I ever see that we have a traffic committee?
We have a traffic impact committee, uh, for the Act 203, which is not necessarily what this would be, but we, we can maybe create a traffic committee, uh, different than the Act 203 one. I don't, Luke, I don't know how that should be handled. Uh, do you have any thoughts?
Um, uh, yeah. First, just pedantic, forgive me. It, it's 209, Act 209.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Not a problem. Uh, the, the second is, Act 209, um, has prescriptions on the makeup of a traffic committee. It, it needs to be made up of people representing certain industries. And, um, uh, our traffic, uh, uh, our Act 209 Traffic Impact Committee that's responsible for reviewing and making recommendations to change the Act 209 study is not currently balanced in a way that, um, meets the standards of Act 209. So, uh, I, I can't just adjourn the Act 209 committee. Um, so, so that's, that's, that's thought one. We would need to do some search and locate individuals to beef out that committee. Thought number two is I have a preference while acknowledging that the Act 209 study needs updating and while acknowledging that traffic is a major problem in the township. By way of planning, um, my preference is to do one thing at a time. And earlier in this meeting, we, um, executed a contract to do an official map update and to do a comprehensive plan update. And the consultant that we hired, um, Tom Comida, hasn't so much as introduced himself, uh, to us yet. And so I'm inclined to let the survey associated with the act with the, with the comp plan update and the official map update run its course and the comp plan to develop a course of action for addressing these. And then we as staff and members of the various committees implement the suggestions. So, um, my recommendation is one thing at a time and the next thing to do is update the comp plan.
I'm good with that.
All right. Uh, and thank you very much, Bruce, for bringing that up and then we'll get back.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Lucas. Is there any other comment on, on publicly ten items?
Uh, no other individuals have, have, uh, asked to be unmuted.
Okay. Move on then. The board that supervises that executive project 20th to, uh, to the gate matters. And, uh, to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone. I'm ready.